Hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving. And before we start, I just want to let everybody know, I know because we're not in the office, sometimes some information isn't being shared like it would normally be shared. But my aide Jim Ammon's dad had passed away suddenly. And we did send flowers and him and his family were both very, very grateful. So I just wanted to let you know that that happened, I think, two days, three days before Thanksgiving. Okay, let's see, what's our first?
We hope you had a good Thanksgiving too, Madam Chair.
It did, thank you. It was different this year, but it was, it was okay. It was different. I actually didn't work myself. Well, you know what, it's just as hard to cook for six people as it is 16. I don't know how to cut down a recipe. How about you? I don't know how to do it. I don't know how to do it. But yes, it was, it was fine. Thank you. My, my entire family is healthy, so I'm very grateful. If everybody could please turn to page five and our first item, because I know David Baikoff has some other business to do, some very important business to do today, and he's going to talk about Bill 110-20. Good afternoon, Mr. Baikoff.
Good evening, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the council, thank you. Yes, I'm here representing the fire department to request a supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling $410,000 over two years. We were awarded a grant through the Fire Prevention and Safety Award to install 15,000 combination smoke and carbon monoxide alarms over two years, in addition to providing public fire safety literature. The alarms will be installed as part of existing program that goes, that canvases communities throughout Baltimore County focusing on neighborhoods that have been impacted by fire, low income, have high rates of fire, as well as opportunities for all of our constituents to take advantage of this. The award is over two years, the project is over two years, and our goal is to install up to 7,500 smoke alarms each year.
Well, that's wonderful. That's a great program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, for engaging in the community with that. Does anyone have any questions or comments? No? Okay, you are dismissed.
Thank you. Everyone have a great evening.
You too. Take care. If we can now turn to page two, we have Director Gail Watts with us, and I believe she'll be speaking on Bill 109-20.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Blavens and council. The Department of Corrections is requesting council approval to accept the grant from the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services for mannequin for defensive tactics training. The grant will provide funds to purchase a mannequin in the amount of $3,324. The Department of Corrections Training Unit will use the mannequin known as cuff man during defensive tactics training for pre-service, in-service, and academy training of all uniform correctional staff. The cuff man will allow for more extensive defensive tactics training for staff to increase their proficiency in executing techniques, making them more compliant with the department's use of force policy. The use of the mannequin will also reduce the risk of staff injury and allow staff to train at a more intense level without risk to full trainees.
Director Watts, I wish I would have known sooner. You could, I could loan to my husband for $1,000. Just kidding, for anyone that's listening out there. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Watts. Appreciate it.
Y'all have a good.
You too. Third item, let's turn to page eight. And we have Ms. Laura Riley from the Department of Aging.
Good evening, Mary Ann. Good evening, Madam Chair.
How are you?
Good, thank you very much. We are asking for approval of a supplemental appropriation of $2,271 of additional funds we received through a grant. Because our budget is done so far in advance of when our grants are awarded, we did an estimate, and it turned out that we actually got more money than we had anticipated. So it's really just, yeah, well, $2,271 more dollars for the Senior Medicare Patrol Program, which helps educate older adults on how to notice when their statements may have signs of fraud in their Medicare statement. And we also do seminars to help people who are about to become Medicare beneficiaries understand what their coverage is and what fraud may look like. So we'll use that additional money to continue to educate older adults.
That's awesome. So this patrol program, do you go around to senior centers, or you just go where you're invited?
Normally, normally in the pre-COVID year, yes, we would be doing seminars in any place that requests it, but we definitely focus on our senior centers and senior housing sites, senior apartment buildings. But this year, we're doing everything via Zoom or Facebook, and we're doing them virtually. And we do individual counseling. If someone calls, we have core volunteers who will respond to them and help them work through whatever issues they may be seeing.
That's good to hear. I'm always so impressed about how many of our seniors are actually using the internet and know, and have Facebook accounts and know how to do Zoom meetings. So it just speaks to how healthy and vibrant and, and smart our seniors are in Baltimore County.
Yes, there was a question I got just before the council meeting, asking if we were buying the tablets that was mentioned. We, ideally, we wanted Chromebooks, but because the schools are using them, there's a six-month waitlist to purchase Chromebooks. So we're working with OIT to identify something compatible so that we get those in the hands of our volunteers.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Riley? Hey, Ms. Riley, thank you for all you do for our seniors. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Always. Our next item, where am I? Page 38. And there's two contracts, and we have Colonel Stephen Leevack with us from the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. How are you?
Good. Good to see you.
Council members, good afternoon. The Police Department is requesting approval for two contracts to provide testing services for serology, which is bodily fluids and DNA, on a as-needed basis. The two contractors that have bid are Bodie Cellmark Forensics Incorporated and DNA Labs International Incorporated. This contract, they're one-year contracts with a automatic renewal for four additional one-year periods. The estimated combined compensation for the one-year initial period is $467,523. Of that, $149,160 is from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Youth and Victim Services Sexual Assault Kit Testing Grant, $24,999 comes out of the U.S. Department of Justice DNA Backlog Reduction Program, and then an additional $116,000 will come out of the Hackerman Foundation Grant. So basically, each contractor will be used on a case-by-case basis, depending on the type of test and turnaround period required. There's also annual site visits for each contractor's lab, which is required in order to comply with FBI quality assurances. The county will be billed at units pricing range between $245 and $4,000, with a 56-day calendar day and a penalty of 5% in reduction should it go over that 56-day time limit. The contracts were awarded after competitive procurement process based on qualification of four proposals that were received. One of the proposals was deemed non-responsive, and the other one is going to be for a additional contract submitted for forthcoming council agenda in December. That would be it.
Thank you. So I'm just, I'm just curious, Colonel, so when they do this testing outside of our public safety building, correct, do they hold the, the samples, whether, you know, they have what they're looking for or not, or does that get turned over then to the Baltimore County Police Department, or do they store them? So who stores the samples after they get whatever information that they need, or is it destroyed?
No, it comes back to us.
Comes back to you.
Samples come back to us, yeah.
Do we do any in-house testing at all?
We do do, yeah, we do do some, but for example, some of these tests that we can get a 56-day timeframe on would take us 165 days to do. In some of the cases, especially the stuff going to Bodie, the safe kits and things of that nature, we get a very quick turnaround.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Colonel Leevack? Okay, thank you, Colonel Leevack.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Stay safe. Okay, our next item is on page 42. And we have Major Jay Lanzman with us from the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the council. So I'll be presenting the master agreement for the helicopter maintenance contract for Sterling Helicopter to provide maintenance and repair services to the police department's three helicopters as needed. The contract commences upon council approval, used for one year, and will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods with an option to extend the initial, the initial term, or any renewal term, an additional 120 days. The contract does not specify a maximum renewal and extension periods. Compensation may not exceed the amount appropriated for the entire contract term. Estimated compensation totals, $1,231,490 for the initial one-year term, and $7,150,000 for the entire five-year and four-month term, including a renewal and extension period. This master agreement is for five years. Sterling Helicopters has been providing us with our maintenance service for the last five years, and for as long as we can recall back into, into the 90s, they have been serving, servicing our helicopters. Which, this, this agreement locks us into the $87.50 an hour, hourly rate for labor on our helicopters, and the 6% off manufacturer parts. And that $87.50 an hour labor rate, I would compare that to what, what we pay our mechanics on our cars for a $3.1 million helicopter. That's pretty good, pretty good labor cost, that, I would think. And so, and what, what is entailed in all that is the inspections for our helicopters, as well as any manufacturer and FAA required maintenance and overhauls to keep our, our helicopters airworthy and keep us up there servicing the county for, for the array of different functions that they serve.
Thank you, Major. This is work take place down at Martin State Airport where the helicopters are staged? Is that what?
No, we actually have to fly them to Sterling. There, there are some things that, that they, they do come here for, but that's rare, but we, we fly our helicopters to them to have this done. And they are, this was competitively bid. They were the one company that bid for this maintenance contract.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Major Lanza? Okay, well, thank you. And Jay, I really missed seeing you around town. I hope you're well.
I am, and I, I still try to make it around town as much as I can. Good seeing you.
All right, stay safe. It seems I missed an item. Let me go back. Shame on me. Item, it should have been item number four, and first we'll, it's page 11 and page 14. First, we'll take page 11, and I apologize to our, our brand-new director. Shame on me. Oh, boy, don't hold it against me. I don't know how it happened. But I skipped right over three bills, no, two bills and then done them, actually. And we have our new Director of Economic and Workforce Development, Leonard Howey.
We'll just chalk that up to an initiation or rites of passage being passed over. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. We have two items that we are requesting supplemental appropriation for, and I think, like some of the others before me, we're fortunate that they are state funds to implement emergency programs that we have been identified to help provide. So the first one I'm going to talk about is Bill 112-20. And with that one, we were provided $50,000 from the Maryland State Arts Council to provide, to support arts organizations and projects that have been adversely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Looking at that $50,000, we intend to have $40,000 of that, that will, well, $30,000 will go to three organizations who will then sub-grant awards out to individual artists. And then $10,000 of those dollars will be used, we would intend to use to just help promote arts in general. And then the last $10,000 is in part, supportive partnership between CCBC and BCPS to create training modules for adapting arts education to online platforms. So we're excited to have been identified for this opportunity, and, and upon favorable approval, the process will commence right away.
Okay, are there any questions or remarks on Bill 112-20? Okay, hearing nine, if you'd like to go to 113-20?
118?
113-20. The opioid recovery through workforce development.
Okay. Sorry, I don't actually have that one. Kristi, Kristi, do we?
Page 14.
Hold on one second, let me, let me see. Chairwoman, can, can he do 118?
Yeah, 118, that's the, okay. That one's from the Department of, Bill 118-20, the Department of, that's funding from the Department of Commerce, the Restaurant Relief Program, receiving $7,081,047 to implement a restaurant relief grants program that will be used to support county restaurants and food service establishments that have been impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. The funds can be used to defray operating costs, such as payroll, purchasing of equipment to expand outdoor dining and the like. Since we announced that program, we have received over 500 applications already, and for funding that more than doubles what's available. So as we go through the process of, of going through the applications and identifying those on a first-gone, first-served basis who will be served, we are committed to helping other organizations who aren't funding, just to kind of work through the process. We know everybody's hurting out there, but we are, we are fortunate and pleased that, that the state did provide this extra level of funding. And just to invoke one of my favorite, I have many already, but one of my favorite Chris McCullum sayings.
Oh, boy.
Here we go, Chris. No, it's, it's, in a program like this, Madam Chair, you know, when, when the state comes with a deadline, December 31st, to get it all done by, COVID doesn't expire on December 31st. So we are in active conversations with the state to see if we can at least extend the ability to, to provide these funds beyond December, just to recognize that we do want to be as thoughtful as possible in dispersion of this money. But of course, we will meet whatever deadlines that we have to meet.
Right, that would be awesome. So I have a question. Any restaurants that have already applied for any type of?
Yes.
Grants, or whatever they applied for during the spring or summer with COVID, were they also able to apply for this?
Yes, they were.
Okay, very good. Very good. Yeah, okay. Any question?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Councilman Marks is apparently having microphone problems, but he does have a question, so he is.
No, no, I don't.
Oh, you don't? Okay, oh, we can. Okay, excellent.
Okay. Does any, does anybody have any questions about the Restaurant Relief Grant? Well, I just think it's a wonderful thing, and I'm very appreciative to the state, and hopefully they'll extend that way beyond the 31st. That would be awesome. Are you guys that on track for 113-20 yet? Or should I?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, Leonard, if you'll just go back to the Word document that had 112 in it on the top and scroll down to page three.
Are you talking to?
Okay, one, okay, okay, opioid recovery.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill 113-20, supplement appropriation. The administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling $646,519 to the Opioid Recovery Through Workforce Development Gifts and Grants Fund. The funds will be used for the salary and benefit cost for new and existing department staff and other expenses in order to assist 96 county residents impacted by the opioid crisis with alleviating barriers and obtaining employment opportunities.
Very good. Any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you so much, and I'm sorry I skipped you.
That's okay. All right, thank you. It's good to see you again. Thank you.
Good seeing you. Take care. Okay, so that was item four, and we already did five. Just bear with me. I can't stand working off of two devices. Did six, we did seven, and I'm going to say we're on item eight, page 35. And it's a contract, and we have Acting Director DeAndrea Walker with us.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the council. The administration is asking for approval of a contract with we fix sidewalks. The purpose of the contract is to eliminate tripping hazards on sidewalks that are within the boundaries of Baltimore County. The contract is to furnish all labor, materials, tools, equipment, services, supervision, and related items, items necessary to perform the elimination of the tripping hazards on an on-call-as-needed basis within Baltimore County. Total compensation may not exceed $106,000. The term of the contract shall be for one year with up to four additional one-year options. This was a competitive and low-bid contract, and we are going to use this as a pilot program to see if we can initiate a new process to eliminate tripping hazards. Apparently, it takes us quite some time to get equipment out and move at least a quarter of, a portion of a sidewalk, and this is a new type of procedure that we're going to pilot to see if we could cut that time in half with tripping hazards around the county.
Very good. I've seen a lot of those from tree trunks that were, you know, trees that were planted 50, 60 years ago, and their roots have kind of worked their way over to the sidewalks and, and lifted them, unfortunately. We see that quite a bit around the county. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Walker?
Madam Chair, I was going to say, Ms. Walker and I had that very same conversation, because definitely in the Pikesville community, where all of those wonderful, beautiful tree-lined streets, you have sidewalks, but the other you had was destruction of main drains. Everybody had to get a new main drain over, over like a 10, 15-year period in the community that, that I live in. Trees are beautiful, but roots are powerful.
Is it the weeping willow that has the most ridiculous roots? They say never plant in your front yard. I know Dave Liggins probably knows this or for not, but people have always told me, never plant a weeping willow in your yard if you have drainage in your front yard, because the roots just wreak havoc on your, on your drains. So they're beautiful.
The original, this is the original terra cord of pipes. Now they, they put PVC in, but they still, they can destroy PVC.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you. That sounds like a good pilot program. And no questions for Ms. Walker?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Randall.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, can you address the, I assume that you've received the auditor's questions?
Yes.
Regarding this. Could you address those questions for us?
I don't have them out, but you want me to?
Okay, well, I do. So in the past, sidewalk repair has traditionally fallen on the, the responsibility, it goes to the homeowner, even though that it's Baltimore County, the sidewalk is considered Baltimore County property. So the, the auditor's question is, is there, is there a cost sharing?
Oh, you're talking about?
Part of this program, or?
Right. I thought you were talking about the initial questions. You're talking about the questions from today. This is going to be primarily, this pilot is going to be on county right away. We're not using this on sidewalks in front of residents' homes right now, because it is a pilot program. So there won't be a cost share, and we're just using it in sidewalks as in our right of way.
Okay, I understand. All right. Well, I think you, you, there were two questions from the auditor's office, and I think you, you just handled both of them. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Walker. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Next, we can turn to page 46, and we have Amy Grassi from Real Estate Compliance. It's always good to see Ms. Grassi's smiling face.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. This afternoon, I have a contract for the purchase of a flood-plon, flood-prone property. Say that five times fast. At 461 Kent Avenue in 21228 Catonsville area of Baltimore County. The property is owned by Lisa Watson. It was appraised at $275,000. The appraisal was reviewed by my staff and deemed appropriate compensation. This matter went on for some time, and initially, she had filed a claim with our insurance division for flooding damages that was denied. And at that point, DPW entered into conversations with her about her issues and, you know, potential resolutions. And they made the business decision to acquire the property with their flood budget. So she ultimately accepted the offer, and we've come here before you for approval of the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Grassi. Anybody have questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Grassi, thank you for your work on this. I guess just for the auditor's questions, as well as if any of the neighboring homes in the vicinity maybe are looking for assistance, or, or what type of criteria? Is this like a case-by-case, or what, what should we do? We have other people that are also interested in, in these?
Yeah, we, we haven't heard from any of Ms. Watson's neighbors. That I know. And I do have here the criteria that DPW applies. And this is for whether it's in a regulated FEMA floodplain property or not. And this one is not in, in a regulated FEMA floodplain. It is, you know, a floodplain, but not a FEMA floodplain. If the property has first-floor flooding, or an average of one foot of water depth around the four corners of the house, or if both the first and second criteria are based on the calculated 100-year floodplain limits against the field serving corner, and low window doorway elevations of the home. So they, they do have that criteria. They would apply it to any situation that came before them, and then determine what funds were available, you know. They do do a fact analysis on, 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 on each inquiry.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers, do you have something to say?
Councilmember Quirkout, I'd like to add a couple comments, too. This is something that we have researched extensively, because we've had multiple requests, and we even did some benchmarking and some analyses on that criteria, whether the county's criteria that we use for the, the.
on that criteria, whether the county's criteria that we use for the the um flood purchasing program was still viable and valid, and the decision memo that was was presented and um discussed with the county executive did indicate that uh the guidelines that the county currently uses are indeed appropriate and still uh viable, which are very, very prescriptive around what kind of flooding has taken place and if the flooding has has happened. So the the flood uh purchase program is one part of it. There is a flood uh, a fund to help uh secure and prevent the flood prevention program with other resources, and the department does have to use the set criteria uh Ms. Grassi was going through to determine case by case if a property is eligible.
Uh, thank you. Do you know what budget we have in the county for this program for years?
It is a small budget. I I cannot recall what the total is, but we talked about that as well. It's a very small budget.
Right, right. It's just something I know, obviously, with the the storms we've been getting and the different floods we've been seeing unfortunately over the last several years. And so if we get people that have interest in this, just send them through uh Public Works. Is there, do we have a point person in the county that, is that you, Amy, or or do we do we have?
It should start with.
They frequently end up with me, as as do many people with all variety of problems, and uh I I'm more than happy to hook them up with the um appropriate staff person, but these do go through DPW.
The DPW administers the program, Councilmember Quirk, but we actually have some literature that um the department, we even went back and looked at the literature on this that we can also provide as well. But DPW is the host agency where the program is administered, and then, of course, we connect with Ms. Grassi and her team about the properties because we do have to go through the uh assessment process.
Thank you.
Some literature. We're happy to send you some literature um on on this extent based on enough properties to come forward since after the last year.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Council.
Yes, um, the um, I know that the that Baltimore County has submitted to the State Department of the Environment uh proposed new maps for the hundred and five hundred-year floodplains. What uh, have they been submitted to FEMA yet? Where where are we in that process? Because I, it's obviously the FEMA maps are grossly out of date, and uh we do need to update our maps so that uh people know that uh where they live is in danger, and then they can avail themselves of the flood insurance offered on the federal level.
Councilmember Quirkout, um, Catch, we'll have to get back with you on the status. I do know that they were um uh in the works, but um Ms. Walker and I will get back with you with confirmation of what the status of that is.
I'm pretty sure that this, the entire last term, that entire four years, this map was being worked on. Uh, I, Dave, is that in your department or Public Works or?
If that's wrong.
By who?
Department of Public Works.
And I know the team, sir, I know the team was working on it. I don't have a status on the top of my head, but I could get you one this week for sure.
Yeah, I, this has been at least six years. I I know that. So, okay, thank you.
But we have discussed this since I've been here. I know that it it's still a actionable item moving forward.
Well, and I think there's a cycle that FEMA requests those on. It's not something that that we make up the calendar for.
Okay. Any more questions or comments, Ms. Grassi? Okay, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your day. Next, I, oh, uh, so give me one second. We need to call Ms. Raleigh back from the Department of Aging. Are you there, Laura?
I've paid. I knew you'd get to me.
I'm sorry about that, Madam Chair.
Sorry, we missed, we missed something. I'm so sorry.
No problem. Um, the administration is requesting approval of a contract with Tranquility Assisted Living LLC to provide care for county residents sixty-two and older. This is a program where we provide six hundred and fifty dollars per month toward the cost, and the um the resident pays the remainder. And we are always looking for new homes because the availability of beds are very scarce in Baltimore County. So we have state funds to spend on this, and so whenever we can find an assisted living who's willing to contract with us and meets our criteria, we do. It's non-competitive. Um, they just have to meet our criteria for uh being able to have a contract. So we're just adding it to our existing list.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay, and I apologize again. I'm so very sorry. Okay, our next item is on page forty-nine, and we have Director Liggins with us. And he's here to discuss a resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Chairman Bevins and members of the council. And yes, I did just pay for four squares of sidewalk to be replaced at my house because tree roots had broken them up.
Full disclosure.
Yes.
I've been there, too.
Today, the administration is requesting your approval of a resolution approving Baltimore County's financial assurance plan under the state's watershed protection restoration program. As you know, when Governor Hogan was first elected, he helped pass provisions to the watershed protection program, uh, and that's the program that allowed us to have a stormwater remediation fee, uh, the so-called rain tax. And the changes that were done allowed jurisdictions to eliminate the rain tax. But it's, I know, thank you, but it still requires us to file a financial assurance plan every two years to demonstrate that we had enough money or sufficient funding to do all the projects that we need to do for our previous surface restoration requirements associated with our MS four permit. So every two years, we file this report, and we have to have a public hearing, which is today at the work session. Uh, we have to have the CIO approve it, and then the county executive signs it, and we have to take it down to MDE uh by the anniversary date of our permit, which is December twenty-third. So um MDE gives us a bunch of forms to fill out, which, some of which we can give to you, but not all. And what they're really interested in is two financial years, FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, to make sure we have enough money to do the projects. And they also make us show everything that we've done, we're planning on doing from FY twenty-one all the way through FY twenty-five, uh, which is very similar to what we have to do for the capital improvement program for the uh the planning board. So we're kind of used to doing that. They also want to see everything that we've done from uh FY twenty-fourteen up through twenty-twenty. So we have this giant database of projects that we have to show them uh that actually includes, one of the appendices has ten thousand specific items of projects or actions that we've taken towards our uh trying to do stream restoration projects and work on stormwater ponds and every tree that we've ever planted. So we show all that to the state, but again, really what they care about is FY twenty-one and twenty-two. What we did was we showed the the amount of money that we were receiving in this financial year and next year and what we were gonna get next year, and we showed an equivalent amount of projects to show that we have a hundred percent, uh, we're meeting a hundred percent of our obligation. So um that's what the resolution's all about.
Well, thank you, and I believe we have two speakers. Ms. Phil Castro?
My apologies, Madam Chair. I'm chatting and doing multiple things at one time. Um, we have one speaker uh for this resolution um this evening. Um, I'm going to use my phone tonight since we only have two speakers at the meeting this evening, so um to those um two speakers, um, I will stop you or or let you know that your time is up. Everyone has three minutes to speak, and I'm gonna call upon Benjamin Alex- Alexandro. Are you there, sir?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for the the opportunity to speak. My name's Ben Alexandro, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Maryland League of Conservation Vote, which has over two hundred, which just has over twenty thousand members here in Maryland. And so first, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the the uh this going for public comments and the opportunity to comment and uh for posting it ahead of time for review, and and also thank you uh for working so diligently to make this kind of comprehensive plan and data available despite everything that's going on with the difficulties with COVID nineteen, et cetera, uh, to comply with um state law. And we also, you know, appreciate um some of the plans here where you've avoided some of the really spurious efforts that we're seeing in some other counties where they're trying to rely on things like uh nutrient trading or some some projects that really won't help the local water quality, really won't help the local uh local folks and local communities, you know, and we appreciate your your commitment to focusing on on projects that really will beautify local communities. You know, but we we also do encourage the county to try to remember and focus on as much upland projects a- as possible, green infrastructure projects. Uh, we see about half the funding going to to stream restoration, and and stream restorations can be beneficial and such, but with those stronger storms that we're seeing, especially like we were just talking, the council was just talking about with those updated maps, et cetera. You know, if we just do stream restorations and aren't aren't focused on those upstream areas to slow down the water, to catch that water, you know, we we could see a lot of investment kind of be wasted if there was stream restorations blowout. So we really encourage as much focus um to slowing down that water and upstream projects like we're seeing, like for green infrastructure, like rain gardens, buyer retention, um, stream bank reforestation, uh, upland reforestation, et cetera, like we're seeing more in Carroll County, Frederick County, Charles County, Montgomery County, et cetera, um, than we are here in in Baltimore County. So uh, you know, and also encourage um the council at some point in the future to consider perhaps reinstating that polluted runoff fee because it could really equitably ensure that dedicated funding that also help improve the bond rating, ensure that steady, reliable funding and making um those capital improvement projects a little bit more um, a little bit more affordable. You know, and and also just keep in mind that these uh, the the permits are coming out for uh comment right now, and so the permit may change early next year. So, you know, the county may have to just adjust course accordingly if there is some changes in requirements at the state level. So just um ensure that you keep that in mind. So thank you so much for the uh the opportunity to speak, and I'd be happy to to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your kind words.
Okay, were there any questions or remarks for um Mr. Liggins regarding the resolution? Or is anything that uh our speaker just shared? Okay, I guess we're done with Resolution one thirty-four dash twenty. Why have you uh in front of me, Mr. Liggins? Thank you so much for the mask that you sent out. It's one of my favorites. I get a lot, I get a lot of compliments on the um on the letter. I I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Kills two birds with one stone. It fulfills our education outreach as part of our MS four permit, and it provides you a nice mask.
I know. It's very good. I like it. We're gonna move on to um our last item. So, Ms. Phil Castro, does that mean we have a speaker for this last item? Because I know you said we had two speakers.
The second speaker was for Bill one oh six twenty.
Oh, okay, so we're done with speakers.
No. The, we haven't discussed Bill one oh six twenty, have we?
I I think, oh, wait a minute. Oh, no.
Oh, we have not.
I'm not there yet. Thank you.
That's okay. That's okay.
Now, we're gonna turn to page fifty-five, and we have our county attorney here, Mr. Benjamin.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council.
Good afternoon.
Uh, Resolution one thirty-five dash twenty seeks approval of the continuation of the local state of emergency initially declared by the county executive on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty. On March thirteenth, two thousand twenty, the county executive declared that a state of emergency exists in Baltimore County due to COVID nineteen. On March sixteen, two thousand twenty, the council authorized the continuation of the state of emergency with the approval of Resolution thirty-seven dash twenty. The council has subsequently authorized the continuation of the state of emergency with the approval of Resolutions forty-seven dash twenty, fifty-two dash twenty, seventy-one dash twenty, seventy-eight dash twenty, ninety dash twenty, one oh two dash twenty, and one nineteen dash twenty, which is set to expire on December eleventh, two thousand twenty. Uh, Resolution one thirty-five dash twenty declares it is likely the state of emergency will continue beyond December eleventh, two thousand twenty, and authorizes the continuation of the state of emergency for an additional twenty-five days beyond December eleventh, uh, two thousand twenty, ending on January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, when the county executive declares it ends the state of emergency, whichever occurs first. I should note that a state of emergency and catastrophic health emergency was proclaimed by Governor Hogan on March fifth, two thousand twenty, and was most recently renewed on November twenty-fifth. Uh, so the state of emergency issued by Governor Hogan is still in effect. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions or?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, this question is for uh Stacy Rogers. With the shutdown of the activities in the the Department of Wreck and Parks, would you be able to provide us with the information and documents that were used to justify uh the suspension of sports that are uh provided by Wreck and Parks?
I can do that.
But I also was wondering, is it, does it have anything to do with insurance?
That is not. That it was not based on, it's based on the guidance uh from that industry. The uh Director John participates with the um Directors of Recreation and and Parks. It was also based on guidance and consultation with uh HHS, with our health officer, and guidance um how we were aligning with um the the state and other jurisdictions. So was not, there was not an issue from our side of insurance of any kind from from the the county.
And you can provide me with some documentation that some of those individuals might have had to uh support their position then.
I'm sorry.
In other words, with DS uh Social Services, you said they had some, you you asked them, or they they were part of the decision-making, right?
HHS.
Yeah, okay. So I'm sure when they spoke with the executive and with you, they probably had some documentation. That's what I'm interested in.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Get that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, anyone else? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we can uh move on to page seventeen, and we have the Director of our Department of Budget and Finance, Mr. Ed Blades.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of council. Uh, the administration is requesting your approval of the annual bond ordinance. This legislation consists of the following components. Approval of the issuance, sale, and delivery of short-term bond anticipation notes or bands up to three hundred and sixty-five million, distributed as two hundred and forty million for consolidated public improvement projects and one hundred and twenty-five million for metropolitan district water and sewer projects. Approval of the issuance, sale, and delivery of long-term general obligation bonds up to three hundred and sixty-five million with the same distribution. Authorization of refunding bonds related to the entire callable general obligation debt issuance uh by the county between two thousand nine and two thousand total, uh, two thousand twenty. issuance by the county between 2009 and 2000 total, 2020 totaling $3,999,499,000. Authorization for the county to purchase development rights as part of the installment purchase agreement program for land preservation and the authorization to pursue the use of tax advantaged status for any bonds, notes included in this ordinance. In preparation for the submission of the bond ordinance, we had the Public Resource Advisory Group, also known as PREG, update our annual debt capacity and control analysis. And PREG reports that we are within our legal debt limits. PREG also reviews our compliance with debt affordability guidelines established by the Spending Affordability Committee. And we are currently below all established ceilings with the exception of debt to personal income. And based on the forecasted debt issuance, PREG estimates that we will also exceed debt to service revenue ratios in 2022 and debt to debt per capita in 2024. Now, I cite these forecasted increases for your information. Our credit rating is based on a variety of factors with debt ratios being one of them. One of the most important considerations is the stability of fiscal operations as measured by the unreserved general fund balance. In this report, PREG highlights our fiscal stability by acting in anticipation of the revenue losses due to COVID-19. Working with the council, we liquidated excess funds and increased surplus surpluses in FY22 to create an unreserved general fund balance of 15%. We also work with the council to identify 58.6 million in cuts to the FY21 budget. In my opinion, this demonstrates the strong fiscal management that radio agencies expect. So for now, we will continue to monitor our debt levels. There will be time for tougher dishes decisions in the future. We will continue to push for increased levels of paygo into the capital budget to reduce our need to issue debt. And for now, I think, you know, we're fine moving forward and I'm available for any questions.
Yes, Councilman Marks, you have a question?
Sure, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. Blades, I, you know, where I guess we're about halfway through this fiscal year. I guess we don't have the income tax distribution yet, correct?
No, actually, for for November, we received it yesterday. It was right on with our income tax distribution for third quarter for 2020. And the 20, for for November of 2020 and the previous year, distribution came in actually $10 million higher than what we had forecasted for the FY21 budget.
Okay, that's good.
We came in, yes, we came in a better than what we had expected or better than budgeted.
Okay, so halfway through the fiscal year, can you give us kind of a bird's eye assessment of where you think we're standing?
Bird's eye assessment is we are doing everything we can to identify CARES Act eligible expenses. And we expect that we will use the entire 144 million by December 30. We are still working diligently to make sure that we cover all of our costs. Remember, we are, any operating costs in our general fund that are eligible for CARES reimbursement, we are certainly doing that. So I expect high level today, always, you know, I'm always the wet blanket, so I'm told. But I think we're going to end FY21 still at, we're going to do our best to keep it at 15, around 15%. Now, but but we will want to draw that down for FY22 to increase our paygo in our capital program.
Okay, that would be good. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Cork?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, Ed, have you had a chance to look at the auditor questions?
I saw the two. I thought I addressed them with my comments that we are continuing to monitor. We are not taking a hard stance on stopping any capital projects at this time. I mean, really, Councilman Cork, it really, and you know this, it's, it's three ways. We stop capital spending, we raise revenues, or we give up our coveted triple AAA bond rating, right? And I think that's a no from all of you on all those questions. So I think that right now, we continue to monitor and we'll make that tough decision later.
Understood, and I appreciate that. And I guess one one question for you, Ed, is, as you know, and as we all are following in DC, hopefully, let's just hope anyway, that before, you know, our Congress recesses, you know, that they can put together some type of additional stimulus package. But of course, you know, unfortunately, we've been saying that for months now. And meanwhile, a lot of these unemployment benefits and some of these CARES package benefits, a lot of them are going away pretty soon. And it's going to leave a lot of Americans really in a really significantly bad place. And so hopefully, before they go, before Congress, you know, US Senators and Congresspeople, before they go into recess, I think they should actually not, not go to recess until they actually pass some package to help really suffering, struggling Americans. These are Republicans, Democrats, independents, a lot of people are in a really tough place. So hopefully, they do their darn job. And because I haven't seen any evidence that they're doing that right now. But saying that, if we don't get additional federal support in the foreseeable future, how are we looking?
I still think we are in a good position, given that, you know, income taxes did come in better than budgeted. We are, as I said, making every effort to make, to take every eligible general fund expense for FY21 and shift it over to the CARES Act, which hopefully will free up funds. So that if we find ourselves in that difficult position where we need, we just absolutely have to continue things that we were doing with the CARES Act, but we can no longer do it after December 30 because of the guidelines, then we'll make, we'll make the decision, the county executive, on on which ones, which programs continue to to progress, to move forward, the ones that we cannot stop doing, given the COVID pandemic. And I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful, Councilman, that Congress is going to move appropriately and and give us the funding that we need.
Yes, yeah, and I appreciate it, Ed. If you could just keep in close touch with us that if we get to that point, which unfortunately feels like this this deadline is fast approaching, can you, given the county executive's office, just keep in close touch with the county council? Because then unfortunately, things are going to get a lot more difficult, to say the least. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. You know, we really were in the trenches together as we put the budget together, and I like to continue doing so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to comment. Councilmember Cork, we do want you to know that we are diligently prioritizing those services that we're providing that are being paid by CARES Act funding, as all of the departments for those particular activities, and we're quantifying what that is and prioritizing. For example, our food distribution, our testing that we have to do. Also, any other support services that we're able to give families where we can get other revenues beyond CARES Act dollars, leveraging as much as we can, looking at when dollars expire. So we're, we definitely are taking a look at what do we need to do to keep certain pieces of this work going? Because like was said earlier, the pandemic is not ending on December 30. But we have that list that had those discussions with the directors and view if we need to really keep moving and know what that cost is.
I appreciate that, Ms. Rogers. And Ed, I appreciate all the work you guys are doing. I mean, it's a difficult time, and I would say for anybody who's actually listening to this webcast, please, you know, write to your congressman, write to your senators. We got to get something passed, even if it's not perfect, at least some type of compromise, get something done, and then we can revisit it after the inauguration. But there's some serious, serious suffering going out there in this country right now. It's going to get worse if Congress doesn't do anything. Personally, I think none of them should be allowed to go in recess until they get a deal done. I think it's reprehensible that they haven't passed it, you know, got something done yet. I think it's absolutely disgusting. So just want to go on record there. Thanks.
I agree with you, Councilman, I mean, Councilman Cork, they should not recess without coming to some kind of conclusion, for sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Jones?
Yes, I guess I wanted to co-sign with Councilman Cork himself and Mr. Blades and Mr. Rogers. Clearly, we stand here ready and Baltimore County, through our credit, through the leadership here, has really done an admirable job in terms of doing everything we can to take care of the citizens of Baltimore County, indeed, especially. But we can't do it all. We certainly need support and need another package from the federal government.
Other comments or remarks for Mr. Blades? Okay, thank you, Mr. Blades.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, we have some council business. If we could go to page 13, I'm sorry, page one, Bill 106-20. Mr. Marks?
Thank you very much. You've all seen this bill before. This is legislation that would allow certain uses in part of the South Towson Designer View area. At the last meeting, I requested a postponement of vote until the community could be surveyed since that time. Those uses have been publicized on neighborhood social media, and I've continued to accept feedback from the community. And council members were sent a series of amendments by Mr. Boswick yesterday.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Marks. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Because we do have a speaker. Okay, hearing none. Well, I'll go to the speaker, Ms. Belkaster.
Yes, Madam Chair. Elizabeth Miller signed up to speak on this. Once again, I'm going to use a timer. I will just, when we get to the three minutes, I'll let the speaker know to wrap up their comment. So let me call on Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
You may begin your testimony.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and councilpersons. I think you all know me as Beth, not Elizabeth. Got a little overly formal there. I want to thank Councilwoman Marks for working closely with the community on this bill. And I just had a couple of comments regarding it. I want to be supportive of the efforts he's making to provide a new location for our beloved bicycle shop and apparently some new businesses that want to go into an RO zone, acupuncture and wellness and a beauty salon. I'm also supportive of the bowling alley and veterinarian's office being allowed by right. I wanted to comment that the uses that are being added by special exception in our BLR zone, I find some of these to be very much in alignment with what a BLR zone allows. For instance, a furniture store or a shipping and printing store seem to fit well with the retail uses that are specified in the code, you know, gifts, jewelry, hardware, drugs, groceries, baked goods, sporting equipment. And the health and athletic, or I'm sorry, the yoga and fitness studio also seem to fit within a health and athletic club, martial arts, dance studios. I would hate for those businesses to have to go through the process of a special exception. It seems excessive for those uses. They align with the uses that are already allowed. And I don't think there's any aspect of those businesses that would be negative for the community. So I think they should be allowed by right. On the other hand, the brewery, I am not familiar enough with liquor licensing, and I also see that there are different classes of brewery. I think probably we're talking about a class six or seven here. And I wonder if that should be specified in this legislation, which class of brewery? But I don't know if a license can be qualified through a special exception process. I've looked briefly at the licensing requirements, and it seems that the licenses allow these businesses to be open until 2:00 AM. And I think that's a big problem for our community to have that kind of business in our, in our area. So I just need, I think it would be helpful if you can give us some surety about our ability to limit the hours of a brewery. And the other uses in that special exception category, I think, could, we're probably pretty comfortable with. I am, I have to speak for myself and not the full community. And I think everyone got exhausted by the CZMP, and I'm having a little trouble getting consensus amongst our community members. So I am speaking for myself. So I guess the only other thing I might ask is that maybe you could have another Zoom call with our community leaders, just to, you know, wrap this up. But I am very grateful for your efforts. And I just wanted to express my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Councilman Marks? Okay, then, we'll move right along to, we'll continue with council business. We'll turn to page 27, Bill 115-20. Councilman Jones?
Yes, Madam Chair. This bill basically allows apartments to be built in Hollings Mills Town Center, which is now Mill Station, to be built without retail on the first floor. This will be similar to what's happened in Houghton Valley and other places where everything is about mixed use now. We currently have a vibrant shopping facility in Mill Station, and the developer at some point would like to add some additional apartments on some of the empty space which circles the shopping center. But in the town center designation, you would have to have retail on the first floor, and they would like to just have simple apartments without the retail because there's already more than enough retail in the shopping center right now.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilman Jones? All righty, moving right along. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Turn to page 20. Turn to page 28, Bill 116-20, and that's also Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a proverb that says sunlight is the best disinfectant. The county council, as we all know, is our fiscal responsibility, or we are the fiscal authority of Baltimore County. So we have a responsibility to know what's going on with the finances of Baltimore County. I believe there has been somewhat of a loophole out there in terms of Baltimore County over the years have been able to make settlements and payouts for things that we simply just don't know because nobody has told us. So this bill will give us an additional opportunity, will provide some, some additional transparency for us to see the litigation or the lawsuits that Baltimore County payouts. And hopefully, by getting this information, you'll be able to take a look at some of the policies and procedures that have led to the litigation and the citizens of Baltimore County having to pay out, having to pay out money. Now, I must say this, that this bill is really about the future. It's in response to the past, but it's also about the future. But it's important that I say that this is no reflection of the current administration. The current administration has been doing a fantastic job in terms of transparency, and I don't think we can ask for any more transparency than what we have in the current county attorney, James Benjamin, who has had countless meetings with us to keep us informed of litigation and that that we are facing, as well as settlements that we had. So I just want to add that because of some things that happened in the past, which is what we, what maybe brings legislation forward, but it's no reflection of our current, our current administration and our current attorney, James Benjamin. In fact, I should also add that you and I have been in conversation. There are a number of issues that he has brought up to me that we are working through these things so that there may in fact be some amendments before next week before we vote on this bill. Basically, some harmless amendments, yes, in terms of housekeeping, making sure that we don't do anything to stand in the way of the great work that the law offices is going to now be had. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any comments or questions from the council members?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair. Yes, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this. I was the sponsor of the legislation that required the county attorney to provide us with a list of outstanding litigation. We did that following the passage of the Affordable Housing Settlement Agreement. We did that following the passage of the Affordable Housing Settlement Agreement. And I think this is a good step forward, and I would like to be added as a cosponsor.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Let me just thank my colleague, Councilman Marks. After all, this bill tweaks the bill that he had put in before. You're absolutely right. You showed some leadership in terms of us being able to be aware of these types of settlement. And I appreciate your cosponsoring, and I appreciate you taking the leadership in the very first place.
Thank you. Anyone else? Already moving on, our last piece of business, I believe, page 29. And that's Bill 117-20, Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. This legislation corrects what I believe is a loophole in the law regarding residential permit parking. Right now, residential parking permits are allowed only in certain residentially zoned land. In Towson, we have a residential planned unit development that was permitted on commercially zoned land. This bill would allow for consideration of a residential parking permit petition on such property. The Department of Public Works would still need to determine that all other standards are met.
I think I might be confused. Councilman Marks, are you saying that they can use a residential parking permit in a non-residential area?
Well, it's a residential area, but it's on a commercially zoned land. In other words, a planned unit development which has a residential component was built on a commercially zoned parcel. So it's a residential property sitting on a commercially zoned land.
Got it, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilman Marks? Okay, thank you. I believe that is it. Mr. Boswick, have I forgotten anything? I don't think I have.
I think that's everything, Madam Chair.
Oh, my gosh, I just want to say we had 16 items on the agenda, a pretty long agenda. One hour and 13 minutes in, actually, we started four minutes late.
That's a nice time.
That's it, I know, where is, where is Councilwoman Matoka? I'm going to credit our early, our early out to Izzy. Just kidding, I don't know what happened to him. He was here at the beginning, and I think he's having technical difficulties.
Madam Chair, that might be an absolute record, only 70, 75 minutes in, and wow.
I know. I think he's got a record this evening. First of our meetings have been about two hours, so.
I remember the good old days, 15, 20 minutes, and.
Did my part to be brief.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. I don't think we have any kind of special announcement.